Good afternoon, we're ready to start our study meeting. And recall, who is the one who's doing the recording for the introduction?
Eric, just bringing that up there.
Thank you. Pursuant to Utah Code, West Valley City has determined that this meeting will be held electronically without an anchor location, given the ongoing novel coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic. West Valley City has determined the pandemic presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at its, at an anchor location. This meeting will be held electronically. Members of the press and public are invited to view this meeting live on YouTube at www.youtube.com/UCWCTV. Thank you. We note that we have a full quorum present, all council members are participating electronically. And with that then, we'll begin our meeting, we'll start with the approval of the minutes of January 12th, a motion on the minutes. So moved?
Second?
Okay, not hearing any discussion, then without objection, the minutes will be approved. Hearing no objection, the voting is unanimous. With that then, we need to review our agenda for our regular meeting later to this evening. There have been no changes to the agenda. I would mention that we will have a need for a closed session to discuss professional competency, we'll do that if there's time at the end of this meeting. Any comments or questions on our regular meeting agenda? Hearing none, we'll move to the next item, which is a public hearing scheduled for next week, application ZT-8-2020, along with ordinance 21-03. This is, uh, request, the city's requesting a zone text change to add specific fence regulations to properties along 4100 South. And I'm just looking to see, oh, there's Steve Pastor in his quarantine at home.
That's right.
So, welcome and update us.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening. This ordinance change is actually a request from our Public Works Department. I'm presenting because it's in the zoning ordinance, but the intent here is to have a specific fence regulations for fences that are in front yards along 4100 South. So as you know, as part of the reconstruction project along 4100 South, the city has installed solid masonry type fences in backyards along 4100. This would establish standards for yards that have the front yard facing 4100 South. So as you know, and believe later on the agenda is a contract to install this wrought iron type fencing along 4100 South. And so the intent here is to ensure that, that that fence stays consistent so that once that wrought iron type fence is installed, that someone years down the road doesn't, you know, replace that with some other type of fence. So it's the intent here is to maintain that same type of fence into the future along 4100 South. And that, that summarizes the ordinance change.
Council, any questions or comments?
Just a comment, it looks great.
Yeah, I agree with Don, and it's a good thing to have some consistency there. Since 4100 South is one of our main streets in the city. Hearing no further comments or questions? Thank you, and we'll move now to resolution 21-10. This will, if approved, award a contract to Evans West, Inc., for the installation of fencing along 4100 South. And as I recall, I believe that was 450,000. And it looks like Dan Johnson, our city engineer, is ready to talk about that.
Great, thank you, Mayor and Council. Dan Johnson, the city engineer. And so I would like to discuss this, this, this item before you, this resolution to authorize, to execute a contract with Evans West Incorporated. So Steve Pastor, give a little bit of background on the fencing. We've, as you're all aware, we've done a big reconstruction project on 4100 South. And where it's been necessary, we've actually worked with Geneva Rock, our existing contractor, and they've installed some of this fence on, on lots where the fencing was affected by the project. And they're continuing to, they continue to install some of this fencing today. And so, but in an effort to, um, to install the fencing, basically along the other project or other parcels on this project that weren't, that the fence was not affected by, um, the reconstruction project, we've, we issued a request for proposal from different fencing contractors, because we were looking for not only the best price, but the best solution that would, that would kind of solve all the technical problems with, associated with installing fence at, you know, in various circumstances. And so, um, we actually only received two proposals, and Evans West Incorporated was the most responsive and the best value for the city. And so it's our recommendation that the city council execute a contract with, uh, that the city execute a contract with Evans West Incorporated, and that the Public Works be authorized to spend up to $450,000 to, to do this work.
Okay, thank you. Council, any questions or comments?
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Have any of the property owners opposed this and said, hey, thanks for the road, but we don't want your fence?
I've had one that hasn't been interested in, in receiving new fence yet, but we're still talking, um, he may still, so I guess to answer your question, yes, but not very many.
So what, what is the, how do we proceed in that case? Do we leave, we just keep talking to him till he changes his mind, or?
Well, in this particular case, complete removal and non-replacement of the fences is an option. His concern is if this fence gets hit, he doesn't want to have the responsibility of replacing a more expensive fence. And so, but he's, but his fence is in pretty poor condition and may be interested in just letting the city remove the fence completely. And so that's the discussion we're having.
Okay, so we, we could allow no fence or this fence then?
Yeah, and I think theoretically, if, if he said, no, I don't want your, your new fence, I don't think, we're, we're not approaching these people and forcing them to, to replace their fence. And I think that, I don't think the ordinance change would, would require existing fences to be, to be changed out, but certainly a great opportunity. And, and really now that, that there's fence in place, that I think this person might change their mind, I mean, it's a great looking product and, um, so there's definitely discussions going on, and we're, we're not going to be heavy-handed in enforcing this to happen, but, um, we definitely are trying to improve the, the look from the street.
I don't know why anybody would oppose having the city put in a new fence for them that says uniform and looks great, but there's always one, right?
Yep.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
So Dan, what is the plan if somebody hits with a car, does not have insurance that will cover it? Will this extra burden be put on the resident?
At this point, I mean, we're signing, we're having them sign an agreement that basically states that the fence is theirs, and they, they assume future maintenance responsibilities, and, um, and that the, these fences would be theirs to, to maintain in the event that they were damaged.
Hearing no further comments? Very good, thank you. Dan, appreciate that, we'll now go on to resolution 21-11. And this is to approve a modification to our professional services agreement with Avenue Consultants for the study of traffic patterns and future improvements on Bangator Highway. This is for $33,454. And there's Mr. Willardson, great.
Thank you, Mayor. As you are all aware, we are in the midst of this study of the Bangator Highway interchange alternatives. When we first entered into this contract, we, um, we weren't, I mean, we, we made our best estimate on what the scope ought to be, and went forward with an agreement, and knowing that we would likely have to make some changes as we went along. And as we met with the council and got the council's input, and then met again with our consultant, we recommended to you that we make these, these changes to that agreement to add some additional cost in there that would get us, you know, to the answers that we want to have. So we are evaluating one additional and, and doing concept drawings for one additional alternative that we'd only, originally only proposed two. And the bulk of the change is they're actually doing additional traffic modeling, traffic demand modeling, um, for all three of the alternatives, which gives us a better picture of what will be happening on the feeder streets to Bangator Highway. So we recommend that we modify that agreement for an additional, now I forgot the exact number, but it's $33,000, $34,000.
33,454, isn't it?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Any questions or comments? All right. Then we'll go on now to resolution 21-12, to approve the purchase of a Ford F-550 truck from Ken Garford for use on our concrete crew, not to exceed $38,000. And Eric Madsen is online with us, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And good evening, Council. We're going to talk about this truck, it's an F-550. This, you guys have probably seen it driving around, it has the big toolboxes down both sides to replace the bed, it's got the ladder rack on top that carries the forms. They haul a lot of tools and a lot of equipment in this vehicle. Placing one that's 12 years old. We've got about 89,000 miles on it, I think by the time the truck gets here and it gets outfitted, we'll probably be at about 94,000.
Okay, that's everything that you wanted to tell us?
Yes, sir.
Okay, council members, questions or comments?
What's going to happen to the old truck?
It may get passed down to storm water. If not, it would be sold off at TNT auction.
So Eric, is this a four-door or a two-door?
This is a four-door.
So you can take the whole crew?
Yes, ma'am.
And then will you just move the equipment from one truck to another, or is it going to cost more to outfit this?
No, we will be putting on a new bed, but some of the racks, the, the big ladder rack and stuff, we're going to switch that over. Everything that we can, we will. The bins, you know, after that many years, they take quite a beating on them trucks.
So with this amount, this amount does not include any of the upfitting, correct?
No, ma'am, this is just the vehicle.
Okay, thank you.
Hearing no further comments? Then we will go to resolution 21-13. This is a proposal to purchase two international cabin chassis from Rush Truck Center for a total of $217,032. These are 10-wheelers, so.
Yes, Mayor, these are, these are the two 10-wheeler dump trucks, well, they will be dump trucks when we get done with them. We're going to add dump beds, salters, the pre-wetting salt solution, and a plow on these vehicles. And they are all utilized just by the street department plowing the, the main roads.
Okay, Council? Hearing no further comments? Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
We will go to the next resolution, which is 21-14, to authorize the city to enter into a real estate purchase and sale agreement with Ivan L. Jones and Lucille M. Jones Family Trust, and this is property at 1380 West, 3300 South. And...
Mayor, I'm going to be the voice for this.
So you're unmuted, so great.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. So, as we talked a little bit about during the strategic plan meeting, this is an opportunity that came our way. And it's not a, we've got to have this for some particular project or, or plan that we have in place right now, but it is a very advantageous piece if we're contemplating, which I know we are, a larger park over there in the 33rd and Cultural Center area. And, um, it does also meet the, the council's direction and goal from a policy standpoint of last year of looking for and acquiring as much green space as we can within reason, however it makes sense. So, we are recommending we purchase this, the cost is that 488,000, we would have to take that out of fund balance to purchase it if we wanted to do that. And with that, if we have any questions, Mayor, I'm open to them. There's also a map down there that might be of interest to everybody showing where the parcel is exactly. We kind of talked a little bit about it in strategic plan, just from the theoretical sense, but I didn't have this map at the time, so that now shows you more exactly where it is.
So Wayne, the property directly north with the house on it, that's, whose property is that?
Yeah, we own that property currently.
Is included?
Yes, and for some reason, I was thinking that house was knocked down already, but I think it was some outbuildings that we had knocked down previously.
And we own that then all the way to the street, the curvature of the road that just is barely starting on our picture there?
I believe we own the whole thing, all the way up to the street there. I might be wrong on a small parcel up there to the extreme northwest, almost off of the picture, but everything that we see there, I believe, is ours, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Wayne?
Yes.
This one you says 400 something?
488, yes.
Very good deal, good job.
Yeah, I mean, you know, property values have really gone up a lot, as you know, but it seemed to us like that's a pretty good deal for this big a piece.
Yeah, also, it's a good for the whole area, for the, you know what I'm saying, 33 year sale, you want to do something in the future.
Yeah, it, it does look like kind of a key piece if you wanted to assemble all of that property there.
How, how about the, the one in the bottom, the bottom, the south side of that piece of property?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the one on the bottom is currently owned by Jones Heating and Air Conditioning, and we certainly have a good relationship with them. I'm not exactly sure when or what their plans are for moving or selling or staying there, but we will maintain that contact and relationship with them so that we can hopefully be, um, you know, they would be amenable to us potentially transacting that piece and acquiring that in the future, but I don't have any information about when that might be, Tom.
Uh-huh. But the, um, any conversation about purchasing it or buying in it, or?
I don't think there is any currently, but I know John Springmeyer's online. John, is there any information further to that effect?
Not at this point, Wayne. I mean, I've had, I've had some conversations with, with the representative, we've, the, the patriarch of this family has passed away, so now we've got a consortium of, of family members that are, that are handling these, these real estate transactions, and one of the, um, one of the sons is operating that business still, and it is, at this point, it's still their intention to keep that, to keep that business in operation. I have told them that if they, if that ever changes, that we would like to be in consideration or like to be contacted about the possibility of acquiring that piece. And just one other note on the, um, on the note, on the property directly to the north, that this is an older aerial, that, that house has been demolished.
Okay, good, thank you.
And the, okay, good, sort of wanted to go from that house and then go northwest, is that, that the Granger Hunter, or what is that building, is, is that right?
Yeah, good question, up there to where the arrow is right now, I believe that is Granger Hunter's, I think it's a pump station if I remember right.
Okay, yeah, oh, that's good, yeah, a good piece of property, very good.
Just to clarify, Wayne, you indicated that property, that additional property to the south there, on both sides of the canal, on that piece of property where Jones Heating and Air Conditioning is, does it go all the way over to that street that, that ends right there?
Yeah, John, you probably know better than I do exactly where those pieces lie. I think it goes all the way over to the street, the rest of that, as is owned by the rest of the family, is that right?
It actually does not, there is a smaller triangle shaped piece there, right at the, right exactly where the arrow is there, that is another, yeah, that is a separate property. So there, that, when we zoom in, we can see the property lines a little bit better. You've got the canal that's public right away, you've got Jones to the east, and that smaller triangle piece is one that is not owned by the, by the Jones family.
Okay, all right, good, great clarification, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing no further comments? Then, uh, we'll go to communications, we have a presentation, protect, prevention, education, any introduction to this, Mr. Pyle? Uh, you got to unmute your microphone.
Sorry, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I would actually turn a moment over to Ms. K. Mack, and she could possibly introduce our guest, that'd be great.
Hey Mayor, we have Terry Palmer, who's the director of the Protect program here. Terry, you should be able to unmute your microphone and share your screen at this time.
Thank you, thank you for having me. I'm just going to go straight to the presentation and, um, uh, sorry, there we go. Everyone can see my screen, I assume. So I am Terry Palmer, I am with Protect Utah, Protect stands for Prevention Organized to Educate Children on Trafficking, and that's children and communities on trafficking. And I have been doing prevention education in human trafficking for about eight years, and I've been, all that time I've been with the Utah Trafficking in Persons Committee as well. So, we are a anti-trafficking organization, and we started out with three, we were created by three anti-trafficking organizations, Three Strands Global Foundation, the Frederick Douglas Family Initiative, and Love Never Fails. We also in Utah are in partnership with the DoTERRA Healing Hands Foundation, who pays for all of our training in the schools, and we'll talk to you more about what that is involving. So human trafficking is an umbrella term for the act of recruiting, harboring, transporting, providing, or obtaining a person for compelled labor or commercial sex acts through the use of force, fraud, or coercion. So force is obvious, it's physical harm or violence against someone. Fraud is deception for financial gain, and coercion is persuading someone to do something by using force of threat. So that's, could be threats against family members, it can be threats of physical abuse, it can be threats of deportation, so any, any kind of a threat is used for, can be used for coercion. So, currently, we have a lot of online grooming that's happening, and the two biggest threats to human tra, for human trafficking are lack of housing and online, the, the kids being online so often. And so what traffickers do is they look for young people who seem to be sad or angry with their parents, or disappointed, or easy to manipulate, and kids who don't have their proper security setting. So they will see somebody who's complaining about their life, and they'll say, I can be that person who can help you, I can be that person who can get you out of it, your family obviously doesn't love you. They'll try and meet any of the needs that the kids are complaining about online, and what used to take days or weeks or months to groom a child can now take virtually no time at all, and traffickers can groom several young people at a time. So we're seeing a lot of increased trafficking that's done online right now. One thing that we see also that really surprises people is familial trafficking, so, um, that is trafficking that is done by a family member, and nearly half of human trafficking is done, uh, is familial, so is done by another family member. Obviously, if you are a family member, you are automatically a trusted person, so that person doesn't necessarily need to groom the young person, it's automatic. And so 72% of those are, are female, a little over half of that is also labor trafficking, so this isn't just sex trafficking, it's also labor trafficking. It can be done by a spouse, it can be done by a parent, and so that's often what we see is, is family members who will manipulate. And with these times, with COVID times and financial difficulties, we're definitely seeing more familial trafficking. So this is the Polaris heat map, you may or may not have ever seen this, but what this indicates is trafficking happening around the United States. And trafficking doesn't have to go across borders, trafficking can happen right in someone's house. So it doesn't mean moving someone, although a lot of our trafficking in Utah is done because... because we're right here on two major highways, I fifteen and I eighty. Um and that just means that there's a lot of people coming through, but that also means we're having conventions here. Our cities are getting bigger. Um we just have more people coming here who can come here anonymously, spend money. Um so we see trafficking at conventions, we see trafficking more downtown, but we also see it in our suburbs. Um and one thing that we have found is that um in twenty nineteen of the cases that were called into the human trafficking hotline, although we are thirty-eighth in the country for cases reported to the human trafficking hotline, when you do that on a per capita basis, we are number four. So we are actually above California and New York when it comes to trafficking per capita. So there is a lot of trafficking that's happening here in Utah. Um this is another map and this just shows some cases that um have been uh reported and cases actually that have been convicted. Um it just goes to show that um it happens here in Utah, all over Utah. Um this is just one sample. I don't know if you guys are aware, but the largest human trafficking case in Utah was actually in West Valley. It's a man named Victor Rex. Um Victor Rex would take young boys and he would befriend them. He would befriend their families. Um he would uh they called him uncle. He bought them new shoes. He was this great guy. He would take the boys and he would invite them to go camping at his house. He had a tent in his living room. He would give the boys a date rape rap through drug and he sexually assaulted them, took photos and then forced the boys to do things like sell drugs at school. These are boys who would never do drugs. Uh the Attorney General's Office really went after Victor X with everything they had. They he thought they would, he would never get caught. Um they caught him, they arrested him. Um he had over thirty-five victims. Um and as he was waiting to go to trial, he killed himself. Um and so the Attorney's Gen- Attorney General's Office allowed these young men to come in and give their testimonies, but even when they were being interviewed, the boys wouldn't allow their parents to be with them because they were so ashamed and they thought it was their fault. So girls and boys are trafficked and as I said, that is the biggest case we've ever had in Utah. So trafficking traffickers learn to um exploit their victims vulnerabilities. And we all have vulnerabilities, so we all need love, shelter, food, money, all these things, but young people, in addition to being vulnerable in those ways, also have youth that that makes them more vulnerable, more trusting. So they are more vulnerable vulnerable to being trafficked and right now, in the current environment we have with families suffering financially and housing insecurity, we're seeing more trafficking than ever. Um ICAC is seeing more cases of child abuse and more kids selling photos of themselves online. So in addition to that, we have other risk factors. So um lack of personal safety, isolation, being homeless again um is really on the increase. Polaris Project just did a report on that. Um housing insecurity is really, really on the rise and causing um a lot of trafficking. We have several cases where um uh landlords are demanding sex from their tenants for their rent. That is in the increase nationally. It's in the increase here in Utah. Um substance abuse, mental illness, um learning disabilities. So kids with learning disabilities are really ha- high risk for trafficking and a really low risk that they will turn in their trafficker because they just don't know what's happening to them. We have to watch for kids with learning disabilities and those who are developmentally just uh delayed. Um any abuse in the household makes them more um vulnerable to traffickers and they lack social support. So we need to shift our approach to a trauma-informed approach and that means understanding why kids are vulnerable and how why they act out. So a kid, I had a coworker the other day who said kids don't go to school just to mess up their teacher's day, although some teachers might feel like that's the way it is. Um but they they truly are going through these uh traumas at home. So trauma can be family members who are fighting all the time, um domestic violence in the home, it can be drug abuse in the home, it can be uh parents who are getting a divorce. So it can be short-term trauma, but a lot of long-term trauma. And kids who go through this type of trauma are more uh more vulnerable to trafficker. So if we can spot these signs of trauma before they actually are a trafficker spots them, we can start to intervene and get and get kids to trust, go to trusted adults for help. Um so we have to shift instead of act asking questions like what's wrong with you, we need to ask questions like what happened to you. So open-ended questions to get kids to trust us and talk to us. Um and then we can actually start to prevent trafficking from happening before it actually happens. But Protect, we have, we offer um for school staff members training. Um uh that training includes uh being trauma-informed. It is state board approved. Uh the Utah State uh Board of Education has improved that approved that training. And we have training for parents as well. Um and then we have uh we offer curriculum for students. So with our um adult training, we have um the objectives are learning about what train what trafficking is, how it's happening, what is the terminology? Um how do we keep kids safe online? What is our role in identifying human trafficking? And then Trafficking One-O-Two, which is learning about the vulnerabilities and risk factors and why it's important to be trauma-informed. And then One-O-Three, which is learning co- um learning terminology and red flag signs and current laws and reporting, um and then how to keep kids protected from exploitation. Um currently, the state of Utah has passed a law requiring all staff members in school receive human trafficking training. And so that's cafeteria workers, um custodians, uh bus drivers, as well as teachers and administrators. And since they have passed that, we um because we are state board approved, we have done most of the training of staff members in the schools this year. Um and we have trained over twenty thousand staff members in Utah schools. Uh this month, uh that will increase quite a bit as we add Canyons District, Nevo, Park City, and um uh Murray District to that training. And then in the future, we will also be doing the Granite School District, which obviously will um allow us to train a lot more adults. Um so our training, our our curriculum for students is uh uh like I said, this is state board approved as well. We have elementary schools. So in our elementary school training, it's right around fifth grade is when we we uh recommend that training be done. And that's safe people, safe places, safe choices. And that's training that doesn't uh necessarily talk about human trafficking. In fact, it doesn't talk about human trafficking at all. It just talks to kids about um who their safe people are and they determine that. We don't determine that for them. Um safe choices, trusting your gut, trusting your instincts and sta- safe places. So we in one of, for example, one of our um activities, we have a hula hoop and we have them stand in a hula hoop and they invite trusted people into their hula hoop. And that's their trusted circle and we explain to them that can get crowded really fast, so you just want certain people in your trusted circle. We don't, again, we don't tell them who that is because as we mentioned before, that could be a family member who they don't trust. So they get to determine that. They get, we teach them to trust their instincts, understand that they can say no. Um and then it goes into our second training, which is about seventh grade, and that's called Protecting a Masterpiece. And that teaches them that everyone has value, everyone's a masterpiece. Um and you, we don't ruin masterpieces, we take care of them. And um they get to create their own masterpiece in this. Um and we uh and we believe that this will also um talk to the um consuming part of human trafficking, so the buyer side of human trafficking, because if everyone has value, we don't buy and sell people. Um and then our second, our high school um curriculum, uh first, that that's about ninth grade, is really understanding what human trafficking is. So how to stay safe online, how to protect yourself and your friends from human trafficking, um what the grooming process looks like. Um and then in high school, we also talk about human trafficking, but then we link historical slavery to modern-day slavery. So that can be taught in a history class. And all of our curriculums are meet the state standards for teaching, so they can be taught in an art class or they can be taught in a in a history class or a health class. And of the teachers who have taken our training so far um in Utah, uh twenty, the teachers have committed to teaching the curriculum to to over twenty-three thousand students. In addition to our curriculum and our adult school staff training, we also have training for parents. Um this is also in the state statute, says that parents of elementary school kids um must be offered human trafficking training. This is also state board approved. Um and this gives parents a lot of tools to work with about keeping their kids safe, both in the school and online. Um and it has some myths, it has videos, it's very interactive, um great website for parents as well. So I went through a lot quickly and we can answer questions, but I just wanted to let you know about one last thing. So I mentioned that the Granite School District will be taking our training soon. Um we are one uh of eight HHS grants that were given um to fight human trafficking in the United States. Um Protect is on four of them and one of them is in the Granite School District. So we are super excited. This is about five hundred thousand dollars for three years, each year for three years, so it's almost a million and a half dollars to fight human trafficking right here in the Granite School District. And some of the things that we're working on um to comply with that grant um is, first of all, we are uh creating protocols. So um police protocols on human trafficking vary depending on um the the agency. Some agencies have human trafficking protocols, many do not. So we are working with all of the uh police departments within the Granite School District to create those protocols, including the West Valley Police Department. Um they've been amazing. So um it's been a real uh honor to work with them. Um and and those protocols will go into all of these police departments and it'll be used by all these police departments, but the great thing about it is it can also be used in other cities and other um areas within the state as well. So we're hoping that this will be a model for for all of the police departments around the state. Um once we create those protocols, all of those police departments will get training on human trafficking and also on training on the protocols. So all those officers will be trained. Um the other thing we'll be doing in the Granite District is training all of the uh all of the staff members, which is in the mandate as well. Um and then we will have three new hires in the Granite School District that will be liaisons, who will train trainers, who will also help learn to train on the curriculum. So all of the students in the Granite School District will get the training of the curriculum. Um and then uh hopefully those trainers will go on after the three years is up to continue to educate and create a protective community. So I went through that fast. I'm hoping I haven't gone over my ten minutes, but if you have any questions at all, I am happy to answer any questions you have.
Hi Terry, I just had a quick question on the, first of all, thank you very much for that uh very informative presentation. Um earlier in the presentation, you presented a slide that had some statistics uh about gender, uh about, you know, types of trafficking, et cetera. Um was that uh in the nation overall or internationally? And if so, uh how do how do those stats relate or compare to Utah-specific stats?
Yeah, that's a great question. So that would be a national, those are national statistics. Um here in Utah, I mean, if you want to know what the common human or the hum the common human trafficking types are, um again, familial trafficking is pretty high in Utah. We get um that's not just with children. We get a lot of spouses who um are um trafficking their their wives. Um so that that one's high. Um we get a lot of labor trafficking in Utah. So for example, those kids who come to your door who sell you magazines, those are victims of trafficking often. Um and so they're brought from other states and these people bring them here to these nice people in Utah and they tell them that that it's a leadership program and they're going to learn how to talk to people. Um those those kinds of things. So they come to your door. You don't get the magazines. I know because I was fell for it a long time ago. And when law enforcement comes in, because they're not really trained, they um they just send them off. They check their licensing and send them off and then they go from West Valley over to Taylorsville or something like that. So um they just move along. So the more education we have, the more we can help with that. So there's a lot of labor trafficking. Um I recently had a case, um a friend of mine contacted me. Her granddaughter um came home and uh this was not in West Valley, this was in the Salt Lake area. Uh but her daughter, her granddaughter, thirteen years old, came home. She's been having a lot of trouble. They took away an iPad that she wasn't supposed to have and she ended up beating up her grandfather. Um the police came and investigated, took the child, the thirteen-year-old away for beating up her grandfather and um uh be and was mostly concerned about that. Didn't wonder why she was, she would beat up her grandfather because that's not normal for a thirteen-year-old. It turns out um she was being, they took her iPad and found eight men who were trying to date her and had been dating her. I put that in quotes, but um and then there was another thirteen-year-old girl in her class. So with online, um ICAC is seeing a lot of kids who are selling photos of themselves and appropriate photos of themselves. That's trafficking. Um and that's gone up quite a bit. So that's what it it looks like here in Utah, but um yeah, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Any any other questions? Hearing no further comments or questions. Terry, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me.
And so with that, we'll go to the next item on our agenda, which is the Required Annual Training Regarding Ethics, Open Me Meetings, and Sexual Harassment. And it looks like Eric is ready to
start on that.
Ready to go. Thank you. Uh Eric Bunderson, very shiny head in this uh in this uh camera. I can't do anything about that, but I'll share my screen and get that picture away as soon as I can. Um uh I will tell you in in regards to that last uh presentation, we do a- as the as the city um both from the police department and the prosecutor's office, work very closely with the attorney general on those type of cases. So uh so I I want you to rest sure that that um we are w- working with all of those different uh entities to to combat that as well. Just put your mind at ease if you had a question about that. Anyway, as the mayor uh stated, today we are going to talk about um ethics, open meetings, and I'm going to give you a little bit of a quiz on uh sexual harassment. So so given the nature of these Zoom meetings, we can do some ki- kind of cool things. So the first thing I'm going to do is I am going to launch a poll and um it should be showing up on your screen right about now. You can just go ahead and take that poll. I'll just give us, you know, ten or fifteen seconds. Um if you can't read it because you're on a smaller device, it says, how many times have you had the ethics and open meetings training?
So Eric, this is my second one today. Just so you know.
Okay, where was your first one?
WFRC.
Okay, yeah, it's that time of year.
Yep.
I also uh would encourage the executive staff to go ahead and if you're on a on a Zoom call, I allowed uh participants to jump in there too. I want to kind of get an idea of how many times uh we've we've seen this. And that's probably long enough. I'm going to end the polling and I'm going to share the results with you. As you can see, um we have the majority of our people who answered the poll have heard this training from eleven to twenty times. Um and I think that that is both insurance in a way and um and a little bit uh, well, I would say a little bit depressing because if we don't know it by now, uh we're not, we're not gonna, we're not ever gonna get there, but I think for the most part, it's insurance and I'm glad we hear it a lot of different ways. So the first thing we're going to talk about is ethics. Um the 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 thing I thought about as I was researching the ethics uh statute and some of the, I was looking at some of the other trainings that people do is that the 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 way that we've got our ethics laws set up is is has this sort of what I would call a rural beauty. And by that, I mean that And by that, I mean that when these laws were written and we had three person county commissions, where the county commissioner was also, you know, a business owner and the, the local lay minister and 10 other things, we just, we just couldn't have a law that required abstention from voting because that just wouldn't work. And so what Utah's laws centers around as far as ethics is the disclosure of any conflict, not the, not the prohibition from voting or the prohibition from anything like that. I found a, I found a thing from the state auditor's office that I will share here with one caveat. And I'll, I'll get to that in a second. But I like the way that the state auditor kind of put this all on one screen. And I'm going to, I'm going to zoom in on that just a little here. But again, what, what we're talking about when we talk about ethics is if you have a conflict of some type, you can disclose it. You disclose that in a way that I can help you if you ever get in that situation. There are some forms that we have to disclose things, but as long as you disclose it, for the most part, you are safe under Utah law. Obviously, the big one that we talk about every year is you are not allowed at all to disclose private or protected information to benefit yourself. The example we often give being, you know, writing a book about the Susan Powell case. If you had some kind of protected information or something like that. You're also not allowed to accept gifts, except occasional gifts. Under $50 is the current statutory limit. And then as we go through these things, you can see that, that you can, you can certainly run a business that is regulated by the city. You can certainly help people with a transaction involving the government. You, you can have an interest in a business that we regulate. All of those things are allowed with proper disclosure. You can still vote, just remember you, you've got to let the rest of the council know. Now there's a couple of things, and this is the one thing I don't like about this chart. And that is this bottom one. And I think I understand what the state auditor's office is saying here. But if you, if you, if I'll kind of zoom in on it, it says, there is nothing stated in the statute that makes it illegal to demand or accept a donation, payment or service as a condition of granting a permit approval authorization. That is patently not true. Now there, that, that's called bribery and it's codified in state law. So I think what they're saying is under the Ethics Act, the Municipal Ethics Act, there's nothing, there's nothing that says you can't give or accept a bribe. But please, if you take one thing away from this, understand that bribery is still illegal in Utah and always has been. So that is the ethics portion. Obviously, there's some penalties for violating those ethics. They can range from a removal from office to being charged with some level of felony. But any questions before we move on to open meetings? Okay, thank you. Open meetings. I like to look at open meetings as sort of a checklist. And so I've, I've, I've just written up a, I've written up a checklist here. And and all of a sudden my thing isn't responding, but that's okay. So please don't look at the screen and just, I'll just go through it. So the checklist that I have is two things. One, do you have a quorum? And two, do you have some kind of jurisdiction over the thing that you're discussing, discussing? Whether that's whether you have some kind of jurisdiction over it or whether it's something you can act upon or whether you have some, it even says some influence over. So if you've got those, let's just call them two checklists, quorum and something you have jurisdiction over, you have to announce that meeting as an open meeting and you have to go ahead and, and post that on the state website and give all the notice and everything. And so that is, that is the deal with open meetings. Now, I will admit, and I think Ms. K Mac would admit with me, that we way, way over, over notice you guys. There are probably a lot of times when you go to a ribbon cutting that we don't have to call it an open meeting. But we've never, we've never gotten in trouble for open meetings. And so I've always thought that whatever we're doing, we're doing it right. Now, the closed meeting, as we're going to have one tonight, can only be closed for certain things. Again, it has to be noticed and once it is, once it is noticed, you can close it for the certain things. Now, the big thing that we close meetings for is as, as we've announced tonight, professional competency. We can also, we can also close a meeting for discuss, discussion of real estate transactions, whether that's buying or selling. We can also discuss, discuss security and we can discuss pending litigation, which we often do. Now there's a whole litany of other things, including discussing bids and then a whole bunch of other stuff that don't ever really affect us. But those are the main things that, that we usually close the meetings for. And again, we end up, we end up noticing these for every meeting just to be safe, but we don't have to have it. And, and that's how we, we overnotice and that's how we like it. The one different thing that you've all seen this year under the Open Meetings Act is the electronic meetings. And before the pandemic, the electronic meetings used to need what was called an anchor point. An anchor point is a place that the public can come like here and here and see the meeting and give comment if comment is allowed. Now, at the very beginning of the pandemic, the governor issued an executive order which eliminated that, that requirement. And the legislature, legislature subsequently enacted that into law. And so that thing that we've recorded the mayor reading and that we read at the beginning of every, every meeting is the announcement that we don't have an anchor location. And the mayor has to sign a document every 30 days indicating that because of the conditions that we currently have, there is still, there is still going to not be an anchor location. Once we get back to normal or new normal or whatever that is, we can continue to have electronic meetings. We can continue to zoom in. We've got all the technology here, but we probably will have to have an anchor location. And as we've, as we proved for the last four or five months, we can certainly do that six months G's. So any questions about any of the open meeting stuff? All right. I am going to do two more polls. So I'm going to launch the poll. Number one. And I'm taking it to. So that's on the the ethics. And again, I'd, I'd encourage executive staff who I know is hanging on my every word to, to also take the poll. I'll give it a couple more seconds. All right, I'm going to end the polling. I'm going to share the results. And it looks like improper gifts are the things that between the staff and, and the council, we are probably more, most vulnerable to. Very interesting. All right, so I'm going to relaunch the poll and I'm going to do, oops, not that. I'm going to do number three. This is for the ethics. So if you can't read it, it says, which of the following open meetings violation do you think West Valley City is most vulnerable to? And frankly, I should have included a none on there because we really, we were really sticklers thanks to the mayor and to Nicole K Mac and all the rest of you for, for always being very, very vigilant on this. Okay. All right, I'm just going to go ahead and end it because I feel my time is running short. So on this one, the majority thought we might be most vulnerable to improper procedure, discussing something not on the agenda, something like that. So that's very interesting. Okay, now, two more quick little questions that if, if, if we get them right, we're not going to have to have any more lecturing from the city attorney tonight. So I'm going to launch this one. And it says, city council members can incur liability on behalf of the city for acts of sexual harassment. True or false? Some joker, some joker has said false on there. I don't think it was anyone in the council. Yeah, so, so obviously the city council members can incur liability on the behalf of the city for acts of sexual harassment. So we, we don't want to be in that position. The, the big things that could happen on, you know, in, in somebody from, from the council's position to an employee position would be, you know, exchanges, the quid pro quo stuff and the hostile work environment. Hostile work environment is where, where you, you are creating an environment that is discriminating against somebody for some reason, gender, religion, something like that. And, and then just general harassment where we don't want to have anybody, have anybody feeling like they, they are, are in a hostile environment. So the, the best advice that the departed Paul Isaac gave us was if you, if you are always respectful of everyone else in the, in your workplace, there isn't sexual harassment. Final question. I'm going to launch the polling on this and it's just our form of government question. It's not really part of the training. We just like to always go over it. What, what are we, or what type of municipal government are we organized under? All right. Okay, again, I don't think it was the council. But one person did think that it was a six member council. That, that, that is wrong. Everyone else got it right. We are organized under a now repealed section of code, council manager. As I've always told you, I've got hundreds of electronic and paper copies of that because they're not printing the law anymore. And if you ever want to take a look at that, just let me know. It includes all the duties of the various players in that, in that form of government. And I'm happy to share it with you. So that is all that I have for all of those different trainings. Are there any questions? Appreciate it very much. I'll see you next year.
Thank you. Next we have ranked choice voting. And Wayne, will this be you or Nicole who will?
Mayor, I can introduce it. We don't have a presentation. We just attached a memo which does have some information that Nicole was able to gather on this, but we're not making a presentation either, you know, promoting or not promoting the, the subject or the question. The council just asked to be able to have some discussion of the subject.
Okay, counsel. I think my comment from Nicole's letter was the two cities that they identified tried it and they haven't decided if they're going to continue it. And so I don't feel a sense of urgency unless some members of the council do to pursue anything.
I agree, mayor, but I do have a question. It seems like there's some talk about this at the legislature. So is it looking like they're going to decide this for us and impose it upon us?
Now that's, of course, Nicole, who's probably following this.
I do, mayor, this is Nicole K Mac. I do know that there are a lot of discussions being held at the legislature. From my understanding, the city will still be able to make the choice whether or not they would like to participate in ranked choice voting. It's more of the county will have to accommodate cities if they choose to. But I have Nicole Cottle here who may know some more information on that.
Yep, this is Nicole. The other Nicole had that just right. Of course, our very own Representative Winder, I had a hard time not saying mayor Winder there for a second, has a bill that he's running that does exactly what Nicole suggested, that if a municipality chose this, the county would have to accommodate that. I have heard also that there are maybe two other bills that will come forward on this topic, but I have not seen language yet. We're watching those to see what comes from that. Obviously, this is a very complex and, and somewhat political discussion. And so I'm not sure how the legislature will come down on this. But I think Representative Winder's bill, because it simply requires the procedural process, should we decide to, probably has a decent chance of passing.
Nicole?
Yes, sir.
Mayor Representative Winder has also assumed another title in city government. He's now Assistant City Manager.
I know, I don't know what to call him.
Um, just a note on the county. I did speak with Sherri Swenson last week. The Salt Lake County Council did approve an agreement to purchase equipment from Dominion. And that did get approved at the end of December for the software and the purchase of the equipment. When I spoke to Sherri last week, she said that they have not received that equipment yet and they're not sure when that will get there. So they do still need some time to test through everything, see how it works, that type of thing. So they were concerned about that. But I just wanted to note that that was approved by the county at the end of December.
Which brings up, you know, another question. The county pushed us into vote by mail. Just basically said they wouldn't run our elections otherwise, no matter what the cost. So do we foresee a day when the county decides, hey, we purchased this equipment, when our other equipment's obsolete, we're going to push municipalities into ranked choice voting if they want us to run their election?
My understanding is that this equipment can operate both, just the regular voting process as well as ranked choice voting. That's my understanding.
Okay, so thanks for answering my questions. I just always have a feeling that sometimes we're given freedom of choice as long as we choose what people want us to choose. And if we don't choose that, then they'll make better decisions for us. So write that down. This comes up in the future. I said it first.
Any further comments?
No, I think I just go with you, just.
No, I think I just go with you, just agree with you, what you said earlier.
I'm really interested in pursuing it, but I don't feel like it's a rush that we need to do it this year. I think that there are some benefits, but it might, and I really think that it gives more voice to the voter, which is what we really want. But I don't want to try something that's not really tried yet, or especially in our county where the clerk is hesitant, so.
Well, Lars, you know, in that letter, they admitted that they may not even be able to physically do it, because they don't have the equipment, they don't have the software. So it may be a moot issue this year, regardless of what the state and county want. If they don't have the equipment, it won't happen. I can just see them saying, okay, we'll have to count it by hand then. So I agree with you, Lars. I think it's early. And even when we get to that point, it may be wise to have a few cities, or a few elections or something, do some testing, see how it works out, and what the impact is before the whole county goes forward with it.
Yeah, I'm in agreement. I'm at an information gathering phase. And so I think the preliminary, and I'm not a super researcher on it, but most of what I've seen so far about feedback on how it went with the major political parties, how it went down in Payson, and I think Vineyard was the other place, were more of just a general satisfaction poll kind of thing, where the majority of people said, yeah, it was cool. But I would like to get or learn more about the actual logistics and the nuts and bolts of how that actually went. And also noting that you could combine Payson and Vineyard's population, that would be smaller than any of our individual council districts still. So I mean, it's a little bit of comparing different municipality apples to oranges. But yeah, same, in no rush, but definitely interested in more information.
And I think ultimately, they still have to allow citizens to fill out the ballot, obviously, the way they want to. And if they don't want to rank them, they don't have to. So it's not like it would require them to study each candidate, because that's also a right we have. We don't have to be informed. That's, and there are some that don't want to be, but they still won't, so. Anyway, hearing no further comments? Then we'll go to our legislative update. Do we have a legislative update?
Yeah, sorry about that. I went dark when you guys switched over to me. I apologize, counsel. I just have three quick themes for you. Wow, that is not a tongue twister. Apologize. I'm going to share my screen really quickly, just so that I know the council is aware of this. I wanted to just share it so that anyone watching in the public or as council endeavors, because things are so different this year, just quickly run through how you can easily access things at the legislature. As you're aware, they intended to have some people come, be able to come publicly. That has temporarily been suspended, so everything is in limbo that way for the most part. The legislators, as long as they test negative, are up at the Capitol and even allowed on the floor. But just quickly, the typical thing that helps the very most, I think, are two places on this website, and you can see my screen. The first one is right here with the calendar. So every day, every morning, I like to come, and this is a really easy way to find out what's happening, come to this calendar, and you can easily click through any of the committee schedules that are here, or anything that's happening. And if something were live right now, there would be a little arrow right here, where my arrow is, and it's a play button. And you could automatically go into any of these that you would like. You can also see quickly the agenda items that are there, and find what you might be looking for. This is a very good way to just find your way around. The other button that's probably the most important, that will be most helpful as you're navigating or having interest in legislative, is this bills button. And of course, we track our bills as a city, and I'll provide you with those updated, the updated bill tracker for today. But all of the bills are always listed here as well, and it's very simple, straightforward. You can find any bill and read the language here. And it's really just a very nice website. They've tried really hard to make it a way that is available to the public. So I just wanted to quickly run through that, because it is a little different. They really have tried to make it as simple and straightforward as possible, but still, it's a different session than all of my twenty-some-odd sessions, and I'm sure many of yours as well. And so I just want, I thought that would be a good little quick primer, in case people have a question about that. The other two things I'll share are, we do have a few bills of interest that are coming up quickly. The first one, Councilmember Nordfeld mentioned during our strategic plan, and that was the billboard bill. It's a bill being run by Sandel. It's SB 61. And this bill, I mentioned it briefly, but it takes away our ability at the local level to regulate in particular billboard signs that are electronic. And we've guarded that pretty jealously as a city, because we have many existing billboards that are not electronic right now, but that are very near residential areas. And so the addition of an electronic billboard of a billboard size near our residential areas could be obviously extremely disruptive. So that is on the agenda for tomorrow. And that's the other thing that Councilmember Nordfeld and I discussed. The fact that that bill is up early in the session is a bit concerning. We have had information back from Sandel today that he is going to hold that on the committee for discussion, as it is early in the session. But that's one that we're watching pretty closely right now. The other one that I just wanted to share a little story, and that is on the, you heard me mention the bill that is in regards to building and design standards, building codes, whether we should have a building official at all, or have building inspections. Of course, there's a lot of conversation that could go on around that. But one of the very ironic conversations that happened today around that was, I actually got word back that some in the building community had complained about the manner with which we had handled the mobile home park during the earthquake, claiming that we, our building department, had intentionally kept people out of the mobile homes because of some bureaucratic inspection process that we had put them through. So I wanted the council to be aware of that conversation that's occurring out there, and let you know that I put an immediate stop to that today, in a way you might imagine Nicole would do if she were upset about something. So I did do that. But if you hear that, please feel free to share the truthfulness of what happened there. It's an awesome story. I know that every single one of you remember that. Remember the amazing speed with which our residents were helped back into their homes, and the contractors were aided by the city and our partners. And so we got that turned around, I think. But if by chance you hear that conversation out there, that's where it came from, and wanted to let you know about that. Also, a quick conversation with Ron Hamm at the federal level today. As you've heard me say before, we've had lots of conversation with him. He reports to me today that things are absolutely wild in Washington, DC, more wild than in his 20 years or 25 years at this game. And he is just holding on for the ride, and will keep us up to date minute by minute as things start to really go here. But he was as animated as I'd ever heard him, and really was giving us the sign that it's just moving fast, and things are very interesting in our nation's capital as well. I can answer any questions.
Hearing none. Appears it is none, so thank you, Nicole. We'll move on to our council calendar. Any comments there? Hearing none. Potential future agenda items? Hearing none. Council reports? Hearing none. Then we will adjourn this meeting and reconvene as a closed session. I think that's the way we decided to do it, since we have to re-sign in, so. Okay. Then a motion to adjourn, and I think they'll be ready for us to sign in to the other meeting. I heard a motion to adjourn. Oh, was I hard of hearing?
Move to adjourn.
Without objection, we will stand adjourned. Hearing no objections, it's unanimous. Okay, thank you, and we'll see you in a moment.